Yeah.
Well, actually, we're going to be at the wedding.
Why were you, why were you calling?
So we're doing the regular, the world, the world. Yeah, we work inside.
Yeah, right. That's it. No, it's being zoomed. And I told him that, I told him last week, he's on vacation. I told him, he can't miss me, yeah, he can give us a letter. You'll be fine.
Yeah.
It'll be fine.
He was speaking with Scott the other day, he told Nazis, not deal.
Oh, you told not to?
Alright.
I told him he didn't get a flight, so he goes on vacation.
Did they fix the problem up in behind last week?
Don't throw anything at us, that's okay.
You. That's good.
Charlie.
Excellent discussion, man.
Let's just tell them what you. Yeah, that came up.
Yeah, no, I mean, conversation.
What, what was it? Bingo, seven o'clock.
Okay. I'd like to call this, uh, June twenty-seventh, uh, regular meeting for the planning boards to order and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Carl.
Sure. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the good republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we're gonna start with a little housekeeping, just so that people know, be courteous to whoever's speaking, um, give time for people in Zoom land to answer. If you come up to the table, please turn on your microphone, um, and definitely state your name. Um, also, just to let you know, in case of a fire or emergency, there's two exits, front and the back. Uh, we're to get away from the building, muster across the street. And, uh, and that's it. So. Let's, oh, and please turn off all cell phones. And, uh, first thing is, let's, uh, kind of get a motion to approve the minutes. For the May sixteenth and May twenty-third.
Motion.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
So now we have under administrative business tonight, we have ADC Ulster Falcon Ridge. I'd just like to read something before we get started with that. We will be providing an opportunity for the public comment on the draft scope the applicant has submitted to the planning board for the information to be included in a draft environmental impact statement. For the hundred and sixty-six lots residential subdivision, the applicant is proposing to undertake on Falcon Ridge. The draft scope is posted on the planning board's webpage, along with the explanation of the environmental impact statement process and other relevant contact information. Notice of this opportunity for public comment tonight was provided to agencies and interested members of the public. It was also published in the New York's, New York State D E C Environmental Notice Bulletin on June twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, and included on the planning board's agenda. The planning board will not be responding to any comment tonight or otherwise commenting on this project, but all comments made will be considered by the board in its finalization of the scope. Written comments on the draft scope will continue to be res- received by the planning board until July tenth. The applicant is attending remotely tonight and will be listening to public comments as well. Is there anyone here or on Zoom that would like to make a comment tonight on the draft scope for the ADC Ulster project? But ask Dan or anything like that. Who? Dan or Andy's out. Oh, okay. Yeah. Uh, Mr. Gilchrist, do you have anything to state or say?
Uh, no, Dan and I were participating, and by the way, thank you, board, for allowing us to, uh, participate remotely. Uh, we were here to listen to comments as well as the board is.
Okay, okay, well, thank you very much. Is there anybody in the public? Here tonight that has anything to say about it or on Zoom? I guess not, so. Yep.
So seeing none, Andy, this is Dave Barton, um, I suppose we could let you go. Uh, any written comments or, um, verbal comment that might come in later, uh, I will supply you with a copy of the meeting recording, uh, the video recording, so, um, I'll make that available to you. I don't think anyone is going to come, but, um, if that does happen, I'll, I'll make sure you get the copy.
David, much appreciated, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. So do we have to make a motion to close the public hearing or we leave it open, yep?
No, it's, it's, it's fine, it's just a scoping session, and it's a informal opportunity for the public to comment, so you don't need to take any kind of, uh, motion or action at this point.
All right, Paul, thank you. Okay, so moving on to old business, we have the Ohioville Solar Special Use Permit and Site Plan for Crow Hill Road. The status of updated plans were circulated to the board, so is there anybody that?
Uh, Andy, I just got some comments, uh, from CPL, hi, Nick, um, uh, again, mostly concerning stormwater, right, Andy?
Yeah, pretty much just stormwater.
So, uh, Nick, I know you haven't seen those yet, I just got them, um, today, uh, we usually don't circulate until after the board sees them, so you look at them, first thing tomorrow morning.
Got it, uh, Sarah did.
Never mind, Sarah already got them, see, never mind, yeah.
Yes, yes, thank you, good evening. Um, I, I just have a couple of updates here quickly, if, if you're good, Dave.
Sure, can you state your name for the public?
Yep, uh, good evening, again, my name is Nick Cunia, here on behalf of Carson Power, developing the Ohioville Solar Project on Crow Hill Road and Plattekill. Um, quick updates here, preface last week, uh, we did have a board meeting on Tuesday evening with Plattekill. Um, we have received an additional round of comments that we'll make sure we are sharing with your board as well. Um, just trying to keep everything coordinated, uh, the one update is they did initiate the two thirty-nine M County referral, so they sent, um, our application into Ulster County for their review. We should have that back hopefully, um, by mid-July, so once we get that correspondence, we'll share that with you all as well. Um, and then from a timeline perspective, we have been given the guidance that provided there is no, uh, major county comment, and provided we can address all the stormwater comments on both sides. Um, they should be prepared to set a public hearing for their August, uh, meeting, that, that will be confirmed at the July meeting, so I can just keep you guys abreast of that. Uh, I believe, uh, the plan was to hopefully coordinate the public hearing times between both towns, so, uh, you know, no obligation there on, on your end, just wanted to keep you updated. Uh, so that, that's the update from Tuesday in the Plattekill meeting, um, I did look at the comments quickly here with our engineering team, we did meet with CPL offline on the twenty-first. Um, it looks like predominantly most of these comments were, were addressed and or discussed at the meeting. Um, the only comment slash question that came up was, um. We, the one on alternatives to, uh, the level spreaders, so I was under the understanding, as well as, uh, my team, Brian cursus cursory review and discussion the other day, that, um, we would be providing a memo that would stipulate kind of how the level spreaders would be maintained in the periodicity of inspection, and then, um, also speak to kind of the construction phasing in tandem with that. Um, and then that would be, um, sufficient to kind of ensure you guys that level spreaders would be an adequate stormwater, um, feature, uh, but in this letter we just received says alternatives should be suggested, so, um, that was one discrepancy that came up. Um, and I'm happy to, you know, dive into that, uh, you know, the later point with you, Andy, but, um, one question I do have is that, you know, based on that May meeting, we added extra attenuation and then shortened, um, and offset the level spreaders we had initially, and, um, that was the, you know, that was the plan. Uh, so if there are additional alternatives, we'd love for, you know, any suggestions that you guys have, level spreaders are an approved method, as far as we're concerned, and we're happy to provide further, uh, you know, information on how we've used them in the past, and that, I think, was the action item coming out of the other day's meeting. But if you have any alternatives that you can suggest, uh, that would be much appreciated.
Yeah, I think if you can provide, um, the operation and maintenance and the, uh, long-term, you know, the construction phase operation and how they'll be maintained during inspected, that should be sufficient. Uh, I'm not gonna provide suggestions, but I do think you should look at alternatives to see if there's anything else available that, that, that would work, just because we do have concerns, um, about those level spreaders.
Okay. Okay, uh, well, we'll, we'll provide the O and M and, and kind of go back to the drawing board to see if there's any alternatives, um, and then we can go from there, but otherwise, that, that's all I had, so thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Dick.
Yep.
Okay, so moving on, before we get to the public hearings, I'm sorry, I want to apologize, we have a new member that's gonna be permanently on our board, it's Evan Pendleton, he came here tonight, and in case any of you guys want to put a name to the face, and, uh, thank you, thank you for.
Charlie, will he be an alternate to start?
Um, yes, yep.
Yeah. Second alternate.
Alrighty, so now moving on to the public hearings, we have K A A A Holding LLC Special Use Permit for twenty-eight Hawk Drive. Um, we said it's a public hearing set for tonight, so can I get a motion to open the public hearing? Both.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
All right, is there, uh, and I think there's, uh, the applicant won't be here, but they asked somebody to speak on behalf?
I am here, this is Rob Page with Orange Flag Management, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good, thanks for having me, I appreciate your time.
So, uh, do you, do you want to speak on behalf or about any of this?
Yes, I can give a little quick summary for everybody, a brief little overview of what's going on here. This property was built back in the early nineties, um, actually mid-ninety, nineteen ninety-five was the actual construction date of this property. It's been laid out as a two-family property, and I am a property manager that works locally in the area, mostly in Highland and Poughkeepsie. We are seeking approval to just legalize the two-family part of this property, so the layout, uh, tax records show this as a um, two-family residential duplex, and we need to make sure that every record basically is in line with what that is. So, first thing came up with the planning board, uh, many months ago, maybe five or six months ago, and then the only other thing that we have to do is, to my knowledge, gather up a meeting with the building department after this approval, and just make sure that we are completely up to code and everything looks good inside the property. Uh, we've been involved in this property for almost two years now, made a bunch of visual improvements on the outside, so just removed a bunch of trash, took down two rusty sheds, we've hired professional landscaping to keep up on lawn maintenance, bi-weekly, snow removal. So I think overall the property is good, but again, it's just legalizing this to match other tax records.
Okay, is there, uh, anybody, anybody from the public that wants to speak about this? Yes, ma'am, come up to the, to the table here, turn on the microphone and please state your name.
Hi, uh, my name is Christina Gavick, I live at thirty Hawk Drive, and I'm here in opposition to turning for, uh, legalizing, um, the, uh, two-family home, uh, as a, um, the property twenty-eight Hawk as legalizing as a, a two rental home. Um, I wouldn't like to postpone it, because there are problems with, lots of problems. Um, the person that who bought this house turned it into a two-family residential. person that who bought this house turned it into a two-family residential, uh, uh, and it wasn't like that before. And he didn't provide enough parking space for the people living there. And he has saddled thirty Hawk Drive, notice of address thirty Hawk Drive, which is the emergency road, uh, driveway for thirty Hawk with parking problems. And the owner of this house doesn't live at twenty-eight Hawk. What he has done is he has parked his crappy car um, in the driveway, and it's covered up all the time. It's never moved. And, um, he's hogging up a parking space that his, uh, tenants could use. So, and then he saddles us with parking problems. Now, the emergency road, uh, um, oh, to make complicate matter, and I would just like to know who the heck he thinks he is. Okay, he's not living here. He's hogging up a parking space, and, uh, he's saddling us with parking. Okay, to make matters worse, the, uh, property manager, okay, um, one day shows up here. Now, the emergency road is still in effect. The bridge is not done, and you got no parking signs. The emergency, the property manager shows up with his assistant, and they just park on the road. No big deal. On that particular day, we had a delivery, big flatbed truck had to come in. And he's backing up, he's threading a needle. Eventually he had to stop because he couldn't deliver, uh, uh, the load to the house. And so, um, I found out who it was, and I was told that was the property manager and his assistant. Um, when the first tenants moved in, there were no issues with parking. Um, as soon as the people living upstairs moved in, parking problems exploded. They were totally ignoring, um, uh, they're just parking, uh, on the emergency road. You got two signs there. They just totally ignored it. Okay, um, talking to them, it took like several times to work out something. Um, but it went in one ear or the other, or the, the excuses I got was, well, we get jammed in. So, that's why we're parking over there. Or it, she's pregnant, so she can't go and, um, uh, walk over. Uh, so that's why she's parking over here. Or, um, the excuse I got, well, I see lots of people parking here. No, nobody was parking here.
Okay, so, so there, there's signs, right? There's signs that say, so have you done your, like, due diligence? Have you called the, the police or have you complained or anything about that?
Yeah, well, that's what they, they, um, they, um, no, I was told to call the police, but it seems a little harsh. Okay, so I didn't call the police. Um, and so one day, um, and the hus- the husband's being dropped off, is basically, they're not driving on, on twenty-eight Hawk driveway. He's being dropped off on, uh, thirty Hawk, and I happened to be by the car, so I went and I talked to him. And I explained what the problems were here. And so, he said, "Well, we can just drive up and, um, park on the grass." And I said, "Well, if you want to park on the grass, we have the emergency road in, in place." So, I said, "Okay, fine." Dean, Dean wasn't very happy with that. But then you come to holidays, and they're still parking, well, at ten o'clock, I shut off the lights, right? They think that everybody's asleep, but it's not, because I turn on another light, and I basically walk around saying a rosary. I pray.
Um, Mr. Chair-
And, and I can see what's going on. So, what they do is, not all of them, what they do is they're turning around, uh, instead of, they put themselves in that, uh, position, and they don't know how to turn around, and some of them just go drive on the driveway and just, uh, so they can turn around. Um, so then you come to-
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. So, I think the point is that there's parking issues?
Sure.
Um, uh, on, on, it, it is not a public road. It is town property.
Um, uh, so I think, I think our point is that there's parking issues associated with it.
Yeah, can, can I just, it's just a few more, a few more, because I gotta show you-
I don't think we need any more examples.
Well, I, let me then show you pictures.
I, again, I don't think, I mean, it's up to the Board, but-
Can I show you pictures?
I mean, you, you, you said there's parking issues. I think you have to address it with the police if it's signage, and the man's on the, we could ask him why there's parking issues.
Okay, well, this, here's his crappy car. He parks, uh, the owner parks his, the cover falls off. It's a rusty red car. He's hogging up a parking space. This shed can be removed, okay, to give him more parking space. Remove the car, remove the shed, and then you, this tree could be cut down. So, here's the driveway. The people downstairs park behind here, the truck parks here, and the people living upstairs park here. Here's the shed, and here's the, um, the tree. They can cut this down and create more parking space. The second prob- the thing that they can do is right here, this is problem here. All you gotta do is widen, uh, uh, the entrance to this, um, uh, driveway. So, what you have here, in the second picture, this is from the mailbox, uh, when I, uh, shot the picture. This whole tree is growing in, so it's hard for them to park. They can create-
Okay, but again, it's, it's a parking issue. You've said there's parking issues, and you're gonna have to work that out with him. It's, this is to approve whether he can have the two-family.
And they have, they don't have a place to park the cars.
Okay, so then-
And that's the problem.
Okay, so there it is.
Okay, and the, the other problem is as a planning board, as soon as the, you have these rentals coming in, the twenty-six Hawk is being, uh, uh, it's a single-family home is rented. They leave the garbage bins the entire time, uh, by the road. Garbage bins, okay? What happens, look at this, it's very unsightly. People that set out those garbage bins, they do it on garbage days, and they pull them back in. These people don't do it. And what has happened is, some of their garbage-
So now, what, what, what's that property? That's twenty-
This is twenty-
She's talking about twenty-
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight, twenty-six, uh, is doing it too. That's a rental.
So.
Well, you should have, uh, in ordinance, because it makes it unsightly.
Yeah, we do. If you could just call the police or the building department, we'd fix that.
Yep. It'd be the police or the building department for code enforcement. It's code. We have them in place.
Okay, well, the, the thing is, what I'm asking is that you postpone this until he solves the parking problems. Um, because we don't want to be dealing, thirty Hawk does not want to be dealing with his parking problems, yeah, uh, and inflicted on us. He's leaving his crappy car.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Uh, I have a, I have a couple of questions, if I don't mind?
No.
All right, so, uh, if you look up at the screen, uh, I think this is your house? Right? Is that, is that accurate?
I guess, yeah.
You guess, yeah. Yep, that, that is your house. Uh, are these your two cars?
Yes.
They're, seem to be parked on the road?
No, we're not parked on the road.
I'm looking right at it, and-
The, what you have is the emergency road, and we were allowed to, they made, um, gave us, uh, a special permission that we can continue parking, uh, on, uh, where we are. That's also a, a water channel.
So, so you said that-
Being dumped, all the water, because the way you built this road, the water's being dumped on us. And that serves as a water channel. So, during wintertime, I have to go and cut out a special water channel to, so we don't, we're not dammed up.
I'm aware of the water issues. I, I do notice that in two thousand, uh, thirteen, there was another, that same car is still parked in the front. Um, this is actually the town property, everything in, in between these two lines. Um, uh, all this is town property all the way back through here. So, um, when you mentioned earlier that the guy backing up was threading a needle, was it because there were other cars on the opposite side of the road?
He's parked on the emergency road, and we have, I had my car parked on, on the right side.
In the road?
Yes, in front of the house.
Yep.
In front of the house.
I, I'm, I hear you. Um, I guess my point to the Board is it's town property. They're allowed to park in the, uh, anyone can park in a town road, as long as parking is allowed.
What's the width of the road, Dave? Is it twenty-two feet?
Oh, it's wider than that. The, the right away is fifty.
Right away is fifty.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, but the actual, uh, you know, it, it's, as you know, it was never paved. Um, that was a Maybomb subdivision thing. Um, so it's gravel all the way down to the, uh-
And basically, it's, it's blocking up the, uh, the, uh, the drainage to that, a small, uh, house drain. Um, it's, that, that's an issue. That's why there's a backup. So, what they built, you have, you haven't seen the pictures. So, what it's causing, basically, la, um, that's lot, um, six. And they are dammed up. They are totally dammed up because of that, what the town built. And it's, this, when it rains, it crosses over, and we have a backup of water also. So, where the cars are parked, it's really a water channel. I have to, during, uh, when I dig out, I shovel the snow there. I spent two hours and forty-five minutes dumping the snow there.
With your driveway there, why do you park on the road, not in your driveway?
Because Dean parks his car over there. I have my car, and Dean parks his car, and the other car is-
Because you have, you look like you could actually park
We have-
Five or six cars in your driveway?
Are there any?
Five or six?
No, just three, no.
Do you have the driveway right there?
Yeah.
Between the two cars? If I'm looking at the-
No, we, we never have five. If somebody else is parking there, it's not us.
So, it's easier for you to park on the road than it is in your driveway?
Dean parks, Dean works at the hospital, so he has crazy hours. So, he parks the car in a driveway, and I park, uh, on the, if you're facing the house, I park on the left, and then the other car, that's called the garbage car. We use to call garbage to the, the dump.
Okay, but, but you're complaining about people parking in that spot, on, on the spot where you're parking?
No, no, they're, what, they're parking on the road itself. They were parking on the road itself. Okay, and then, uh, during holidays, they're parking in front of Scott's house, um, alongside his property.
So, so, you know, the purpose here tonight, I know you're voicing your complaint and stuff, but we, we won't keep this open or delay it. If you have a problem or there's a violation, then you are to call the police.
Well, even the ma- the manager doesn't even know how to, uh, drive down twenty-eight Hawk Drive to visit the house. He has to drive down thirty Hawk in order to go inside the house.
Okay.
Even the manager is violating, uh, uh, violating, uh, the whole, whole thing. So, why should we have to, uh, be saddled with this? I mean, they could start, remove his crappy car.
Okay, that's, we, we, we're not, we can't tell the gentleman to remove his car.
Well, you don't have the parking space, do you? You don't, he doesn't have the parking space for all, uh, the tenants and his guests. Or I get, well, we get jammed up. All it's really hard.
Okay.
Wait, let's, uh, let's ask him if he can put a driveway in off the service room.
No.
You can't do that?
I would, I actually do have a couple of things in motion already that I'd like to speak on if I have a moment.
Yeah, okay.
Um, but I don't want to interrupt if this is a closed time that our neighbor gets here, that-
You want pictures, you can have it.
Yeah, if you want to hear what he has to say, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say, uh, first of all, I know that some of this stuff is not that pleasant to deal with, but, uh, based on what you said, I'm definitely committed to make sure that this is okay in the future. Now, I want to start off with a couple of things that you mentioned. So, the trash can, I did actually receive a call a while back, though. This is at least three months about a trash can, probably closer to six months about trash cans that were left over. So, just as a courtesy, I called the tenant that lives there. She was actively in labor, and the trash can was left outside, so I had another person come in and just bring that in. I'm not aware of the trash being left out any other times. But again, I'm not at the property or near there every single day to monitor that type of stuff, but that's the only complaint that I had, and we resolved it, I believe, by the next morning. Um, as far as the cargoes that you mentioned there, one of the things we did to improve the overall look of that place, and to start to move forward on things that needed to be taken care of with the town, was remove a temporary garage structure, structure. So, one of the metal pole styles with the tarp on the outside that did not have a proper permit. Underneath that garage was a concrete pad, which is the spot you're referencing. That's actually not a parking spot. It was a concrete pad for a temporary garage we took down, which was not permitted. So, we tried to get that in line with, uh, what's supposed to be happening over there. The next thing, and I wanted to address this, I'm not completely certain of the order that things need to be done in, but in my notes, as this started many months ago, I have written down a, a sort of steps in the process along the way to get this done, and I have written down that part of my approval, part of the process to complete everything, is to get approval for this from the planning board. And then from there, I can submit plans on how I would outline parking. So, we have an outline of four different parking spaces, which there's plenty of room for with the current configuration. And then, uh, that includes taking down one more shed, but there were three ratty-looking sheds on the property. We've already taken down two of those.
And they've taken them down?
Yeah, two of the three are, are taken down. They were completely rusted out, metal sheds that looked terrible. We took them down and planted grass seed in the spot. Uh, there is a third that's a plastic shed right now, that if I can get an okay on a parking layout, I'm happy to remove that and, and make, uh, outlined parking spaces, which I, I would definitely plan on doing. But like I said, that, the spot that you're specifically referencing, the covered car, that was actually not a parking spot. That's a pad for a garage we took down to get this property more in line with the permitting.
Yeah, I know, it was illegal. Joe Booster, he, he put it up in a super, uh, high, uh, building inspector made him take it down.
Exactly, and I think overall the property looks much better without that and the two shed.
How many cars are in the house? And you have two apartments now? Or is it four?
Yeah, but there's three, and, and that's one thing I wanted to speak on too. Right now, there's three cars that are consistently there. The people that live upstairs have one, and the people that live downstairs have two. Now, um, this property, so I'm the manager. My name is Rob. I work for Orange Flag Management, which is based out of Poughkeepsie, but we do Poughkeepsie and Highland. I have never personally met this neighbor, and also anytime I've been there has, I've been parking inside the actual driveway, so I'm not sure what the reference is with the, the parking on the gravel driveway. I typically come in a minivan to visit the property and, and park in the actual gravel driveway. And then the last thing is, this property was built as two, so in the beginning, it was referenced that, uh, it was never two apartments or two people living there. Joe, the prior owner, did have it broken down into two apartments. He only lived in the first apartment and decided not to rent out for the few years prior to his sale, the downstairs. So, the downstairs was empty for a couple of years, but still a separate apartment that was completely empty. And I do have pictures I could provide if I needed to in the future for that, of all of his belongings and then empty apartment below.
Can I respond to something? Um, on that particular day that he showed up, um, when I, uh, I questioned, uh, the, uh, uh, the person living upstairs, who was that? And what I was told was that was the manager and the assistant manager. So, that's, that's where I got that information from.
Okay, but do, do you see that gentleman right there? He's the property manager. Have you talked to him? Have you seen?
No, I, I didn't, I didn't talk to-
I mean, he just said that he would be willing to talk to you or come, so if that-
He's gonna provide four parking spaces.
On the property?
Plus, they also have the option to park on the shoulder of town road.
They have, they-
Unless it's posted, no parking.
Yeah.
Okay.
They, they were ignoring everything.
Well, it's not, is it posted or is it?
Is it posted, no parking?
Is it posted, no parking?
But you park there.
It's not posted for us.
Oh. Yeah, why?
There's, there's, they, what?
You have your card?
My card?
Yeah.
They have- They, they have, they have no parking signs on, on that right side, as you can see. And we were-
I'm happy to talk to them about parking on there if that's an issue.
Yeah, so, I mean, we can move forward with this. There's no reason why he can't be, you know, set to do his two things.
Well, one of the things that the put a, like, uh, I just assumed that it was because everything's been quiet with the friends, um, because of this meeting that's coming up, and we haven't had any problems. But I just assume that's because of this, this meeting. Because, right, everybody's, uh, the people living upstairs, uh, this, the problem exploded with the people as soon as the people, uh, that moved, uh, moved in upstairs. That's when the problem exploded.
Well.
It's, it's all of the friends.
What's that? Okay, so, uh, Paul, do you have anything on this?
Yeah, just one thought. We could add a condition to the approval resolution that would require, uh, proof of adequate onsite parking for the use, and, uh, have that provided to the building department. and, uh, have that provided to the building department to their satisfaction. And that may help to, uh, a- at least formalize the applicant's commitment to deal with this issue. And he can continue to work with Dave Barton on that.
Yeah, that's, I'm, I'm okay with that. Are you good? We're good with that. Is that okay?
Yeah, I'm good with that too, for sure.
There you go, okay.
I actually have reached out to a company to help us, uh, redo the gravel section of the driveway and I have plans ready to go to show the drawing of, uh, what we believe would be the best layout for parking too, so. Um, beyond.
But you could show us?
Not tonight, but I could certainly get that out to Sarah to, for distribution, absolutely.
You good? Everybody on board? Okay, so, uh, we can make a motion to close. Oh, is there any other, any person in the public around Zoom that would like to speak on behalf? Thank you very much, ma'am.
That shut off?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, 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 you could keep them, when, when you, you could use them to talk to the property manager. Okay, so can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, Paul, can you help us with the resolution?
Sure can, you guys. Um, okay, so I'll just re- uh, read the resolve clauses. Uh, now therefore be it resolved that pursuant to the zoning code, planning board hereby grants the applicant conditional approval of their application for a special use permit. Um, pursuant to the zoning code, the planning board hereby grants the applicant conditional approval of their site plan uh, based on the plan submitted. Um, the planning board chairman shall be authorized to sign the plans um, upon, uh, satisfaction of the following conditions. Uh, the applicant shall seek prior approval of any amendments to approved site plans. Uh, proof of adequate onsite parking for the use shall be provided to the satisfaction of the building department. And the applicant shall obtain, uh, and comply with any required building permits. Um, be it further resolved that the approved two-family dwelling use shall expire if the use changes. And if any portion of this resolution is annulled, the remainder shall stay in effect. Within five days of the effective date of the resolution, a copy shall be filed in, with the town clerk and a copy shall also be provided to the planning board. Um, please be it further resolved that, uh, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Hey, thank you, Paul. Um, we have a motion to accept this as read?
Motion.
And, and I'm sorry, one other, I, I apologize. One other condition is, uh, payment of all fees prior to, uh, signing of the site plans as well, including rec fees.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
Well, you gotta redo that, yes.
Oh, okay, so, can I have a motion to?
Motion.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we do a roll, Paul, or not?
Yeah.
Okay, no?
Roll the.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda.
Thank you, Robert. We'll be in touch.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. Have a great night.
Take care, Robert. Okay, next on the agenda is, is John Conti, special use permit for two twenty-five Martin Avenue. Uh, review statistics of public hearing except for tonight. Can I have a motion to open a public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposing? Good. John?
Conti, uh, two-two-five Martin Avenue.
Oh, dude, you have, we're pretty much just going with the draft resolution, right?
You open the public hearing?
Oh, yeah, we gotta open a public hearing. Got this right here. Have a motion to open a public hearing?
Motion.
Second. Jared? All in favor? Anybody here to talk and speak? And that's you? Do you want to tell us a little bit about the project or what, how we've come about?
I feel like I've done it five times already.
Yeah.
Now I know better than you.
Well, if there's anybody else that has come, we gotta do it, so.
Uh, I'm building a two-car garage with an accessory one-bedroom apartment above it.
Okay. Anything from staff or everything was good, right? Yeah. Anybody from the public around Zoom that would like to speak on behalf or against? Okay, so, yeah, so there being none, I'd like to close the public hearing and a motion?
Motion.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. So now, uh, Paul, you want to take this, this one? I think you're muted.
My apologies. Uh, we get to the right resolution. Okay, so this is, uh, for accessory apartment for John Conti and Jennifer Frank. Uh, this is, uh, I'll, I'll go right to the, um, they, they went through the process of, uh, just for the record, um, the planning board declined to issue a waiver for an accessory apartment that exceeded six hundred and fifty square feet. So they went to the ZBA. The ZBA granted an area variance. Um, this is a, uh, seeker, uh, uh, type-two action. Or actually, it's an unlisted action. Um, so let me stop myself right there. Uh, Dave, let's go through the part two real quick, EAF part two.
Okay.
For this project?
Yep, gentlemen, you know the answers are no small, no or small impact or moderate to large impact. I'll need to hear you out loud. Number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No impact.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Will the proposed act, proposed, oh, it's a CEA, we don't have any. Uh, will the proposed action result in the adverse change in the existing level of traffic or, uh, in fact, existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway? Will the proposed action create, cause an increase in use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will the proposed action impact existing pub, um, private water supplies?
No.
Will the, uh, same question for private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, fauna?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems?
No.
Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Based on your answers, I will check the box saying you have determined based on the information and analysis above and any supporting documentation, that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts.
Very good. All right, so, uh, with a seeker negative declaration in hand, uh, the board's approval would be, uh, now therefore be it resolved that pursuant to the zoning law, zoning code and town, New York State town law, uh, special use permit for the accessory apartment is approved. Uh, the site plan, person, again, pursuant to zoning code and New York State town law is, uh, conditionally approved uh, subject to the following conditions. It can be signed, uh, by the chair. Uh, the applicant shall seek prior approval of any amendments. Applicant shall pay any outstanding fees owed to the town of Lloyd and shall comply with all required building permits from the town of Lloyd Building Department prior to the undertaking of the project. Um, that, uh, approval of the accessory apartment shall expire if the use changes. Uh, the resolution should remain in effect, uh, if any port, part of it is annulled by a court. Um, and a copy of the resolution shall be filed with the town clerk and also provided to the applicant.
Okay. Can I have a motion to accept? Motion as read? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dangerous. We're good. Thank you. Hi, John. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the First Presbyterian Church of Highlands, subdivision twenty-six and twenty-eight Church Street. Um, we're gonna set a public hearing for tonight. Can I have a motion to open a public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Ma'am? Ma'am, can you state your name?
Um, Patty Brooks, representing the First Presbyterian Church. Um, we have proposal for a two-lot subdivision of a zero-point-six-six acre parcel of land located right across the street at the intersection of Church Street and Grove Street. Um, the proposal is to separate the mans from the church building. We did receive ZBA approval for the setback, um, because the buildings are currently too close to meet current setback requirements. Um, and I believe that the, we still have outstanding, the applicant is working with the town water and sewer department to split the water and sewer facilities, um, between the structures. We did submit documentation that there, have that in process. Um, but I am aware that that would be a condition of approval. We've discussed the need for that.
Okay. Is there anybody here that wants, have any public comment on Zoom or? Or in the, uh, public? You know, yeah. Therefore, none? Was there a seeker on this or no? It was unlisted, right? No, no. Paul, do you have anything?
Snap, anything? He's muted.
Oh, muted again?
You're muted, my friend.
I apologize. Um, I don't have anything to add. Um, I can move to a resolution if the board is, uh, of a mind after closing the public hearing.
Okay, nobody else to speak? I would like to motion to close public hearing?
Motion.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. All right, Paul.
Okay, once again, um, I'll turn it over to my good friend Dave to, uh, work us through the SEAF part two because this is an unlisted action under seeker.
Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
No. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
No. Will the proposed action have a, uh, CEA, we don't have any. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic?
No.
Will the proposed action, uh, cause an increase in use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation, et cetera, et cetera?
No.
Will the proposed action impact existing public water supplies?
No.
No. Public, uh, wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
See, Andy wastewater. Andy wastewater. All right, come on. Now, will proposed action
Wake up.
impair the, the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change with natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, et cetera? Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems?
No.
Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
Based on your answers, I will check the box saying you've determined based on the information and analysis above and any supporting documentation, that proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts.
And, and we've included that as a whereas clause in the approval resolution. This is a two-lot subdivision involving existing development. Um, and, uh, the planning board has held and closed this public hearing pursuant to this, uh, subdivision regulations. Um, and consistent with New York State town law, the planning board hereby waives requirement for a public hearing on the final subdivision plat submitted for approval by the applicant. Uh, be it further resolved that pursuant to the subdivision regulations in New York State town law, the planning board hereby approves conditionally the final subdivision plat for the project uh, prepared by Control Point Associates, last revised January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four. Be it further resolved that pursuant to the subdivision regulations in New York State town law, the planning board chairman is hereby authorized to sign the approved plat upon satisfaction of the following conditions, signature in the appropriate places, proof of separation of water and sewer services for the two lots to the satisfaction of the building department and payment of any fees owed to the town of Lloyd. And upon completion of the requirements of the conditional approval determined, shall sign the approved plat, certifying it as the approved final plat that pursuant to the subdivision regulations, the app, applicant shall record the approved final plat with Ulster County within ninety days, or it should be null and void. Uh, six copies shall be, uh, that, that have been signed by the Ulster County clerk shall be transmitted to the town clerk, uh, for distribution. Any part of the resolution that's annulled, um, you know, the rest of it will remain in effect. And that within five days of the effective date of this resolution, a copy shall be filed with the clerk and another copy shall be sent to the applicant. Uh, be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Is it, is there another copy of this that has your signature? This is still. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I have it. I have the one. All right, so can I have a motion to accept it as read?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Patty, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
Happy fourth.
Same to you. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is, um, Eric, uh, Schellenberg. This is subdivision on one forty-nine Martin Avenue. We have set the public hearing. Can I have, it's an unlisted action. Can I have a motion to, uh, open a public hearing?
Both.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, sir.
Uh, is this on, yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, my name is Eric Koach Schellenberg. I own one forty-nine Martin Avenue and we want to do a subdivision, uh, take off a one-point-one acre parcel. So my parents can build a house over there. We got all the engineering stuff taken care of. Um, so, I don't know, there's, you know, you guys saw the plans and everything, isn't it?
Yeah. I don't think there was anything else. We're good to go, right? Yeah, so. Is there anybody from the public that, uh, could be against this or have anything to say in favor of the project? Anybody on Zoom? There being none, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second. Okay. Paul? Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
Muted, Paul.
Yeah.
Yep, I got it. Uh, once again, uh, this is an unlisted action for secret purposes. So I'll turn the mic over to Dave.
Does anybody not remember the questions?
No, all.
It is, it is in this instance, but I, I will read them for the record. Uh, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan and zoning regulations?
No.
No. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
No. We have no CEAs. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect? Will the proposed action cause an increase in use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation?
No.
Will the proposed action impact existing private water supplies?
No.
No. Uh, private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, et cetera, et cetera?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Based on your answers, I will check the box saying you've determined based on the information and analysis above and any supporting documentation, that proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts.
Very good. Um, once again, we have a two-lot subdivision. Um, the seeker has been. Um, the seeker has been done. The, um, planning board has the opportunity to waive uh, the need for two public hearings on this and to basically treat this as the final plat. Uh, so the first, uh, wave or whereas, uh, that's relevant is that, uh, the board is willing to treat this as both the preliminary and final plat and finds that an additional public hearing is unnecessary. Uh, now therefore be it resolved that pursuant to the subdivision regulations in New York State town law, the planning board, uh, waives that requirement and pursuant to the subdivisions, uh, regulations in New York State town law, the planning board hereby approves conditionally a final subdivision plat for the project. Uh, be it further resolved that pursuant to the subdivision regulations in New York State town law, planning board chairman is authorized to sign the approved plat upon satisfaction of the following conditions: submission of a final plaque consistent with the set, with the sketch plan that's been provided, um, that complies with all requirements of the subdivision regulations as determined by the Town of Lloyd Building Department and the planning board's engineer. Signature of the approved plat by the surveyor and property owner in the blocks provided on the approved plat and payment of any fees owed to the Town of Lloyd. And upon completion of those requirements, the chair can sign the approved plat certifying, certifying it as the final, uh, approved final plat. And be it further resolved that pursuant to the subdivision regulations, the applicant shall record it with the Ulster County clerk within ninety days after its signing or it shall be null and void. And that six copies shall be provided to the town clerk for distribution. Uh, if any part of this resolution is annulled by a court, uh, the remainder shall stay in effect. Uh, within five days of the effective date of the resolution, a copy shall be filed with a clerk and all, uh, also provided to the applicant. And this resolution upon your approval shall take effect immediately.
Thank you, Paul. So can I have a motion to accept this as read?
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next on the agenda, we have Mark Reynolds, special use permit, two-thirty-five Holy's Corners Road. Like a motion to open a public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. All right, Mark, go ahead. Take it away. Tell us a little bit about the project.
Um, I, I think you've seen it before, but that's it. Excuse me, you're, you were looking for approving the, uh, apartment in the basement. And then I see if the next thing is a short-term rental after that. So it's pretty much, no, nothing's changed in terms of the size or any work or anything like that.
Okay. Do we have any comment from staff or anybody or anything or any?
No.
Public out here or out in Zoom land? Okay. There being none? Guess we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll move on to the, uh, draft resolution, Paul.
Sure. So this is the resolution to authorize the after-the-fact accessory apartment. Unlike the Conti application, because the apartment is within the home, this is a seeker part-two applicat- or, um, action, so no further seeker review is required and we give Dave a break for a minute. Um, and I can move on to the resolved paragraphs. Uh, that pursuant to the zoning clo- zoning code and New York State town law, the planning board hereby grants the applicant's conditional approval of their application for a special use permit. Pursuant to the zoning code and New York State town law, planning board hereby grants conditional approval of their site plan for the project based on the site plan and building plan submitted. Um, and the chairman is authorized to sign the site plans um, a- as the approved site plans upon confirmation of payment by the applicant of any outstanding fees by the Town of Lloyd. Be it further resolved that the applicant's accessory apartment use shall be subject to the following conditions. Uh, the applicant shall seek prior approval of any amendments to the approved site plans before taking, undertaking any work not approved by this resolution. And the applicant shall obtain and comply with all required building permits from the Town of Lloyd for the project prior to undertaking the accessory apartment use. And that approval of the accessory apartment use shall expire. Um, if the use changes, um, that if any part of this resolution is annulled, the remainder shall, uh, you know, stay in effect. Within five days of the effective date, a copy of the resolution shall be filed with the town clerk and, uh, also mailed to the applicants. And that upon your, uh, adoption of this resolution, uh, it shall take effect immediately.
Okay, thank you, Paul. So with that, with the draft resolution being read, can I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All righty. And then moving
One down.
Now we're gonna go to, uh, uh, short-term Reynolds. It'll be Mark. Same thing, two-thirty-five Holy's Corners Road. Application, supporting documents been circulated to the board. Type B. And, uh, can we open a public? Can I get a motion to open a public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We know, we know where this was going. Pretty much.
Can I ask a question, John?
Sure.
Mark, I see the application was submitted back in March of twenty-three for this short-term rental? At least that's what's in front of me.
I don't have it in front of me, but I'm assuming.
My only question is, have you been renting it since March of twenty-three, since you've applied pending approval?
No.
All right. So is there? Do I? Anybody? Yeah, no comment, right, from staff, anything?
No.
Good. All right. We can move ahead and have it, the resolution.
Did you want to close the public hearing? Did you open the public hearing?
Oh, I gotta close, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Motion to close public hearing.
Motion.
Great.
Second.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
There it goes.
Okay, so this is, um, like all of our STR resolutions, this is also a, uh, seeker type-two action. So no further, uh, seeker review is required. Um, now therefore be it resolved that pursuant to the STR regulations and New York State town law, the chairman's authorized to sign the special use permit, approving the use of his pass property for an STR with a maximum capacity of two guests per stay upon payment of any fees, including but not limited to recreation and escrow fees owed to the Town of Lloyd. Be it further resolved after, after the permit is signed by the planning board chairman, uh, it shall remain in effect, uh, for two years. It may be renewed pursuant to the zoning code uh, by issuance of a permit by, from the code enforcement officer. Any part of this resolution is annulled, uh, the rest of it shall stay in effect. Uh, within five days, it shall be a copy of the resolution. Uh, shall be filed with the town clerk and, uh, a copy shall also be sent to the applicant. And upon its adoption, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Thank you, Paul. So, uh, can I have a motion to accept as read?
Motion.
Okay. Uh, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay, so now moving along, we have, uh, Maric Co- 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 at Fifty Belvy Road. Type-two seeker. We have, we're, we're gonna, we already had it open, right? Yep, yep. So is there anybody here to speak in Zoom or anything?
No.
Any, anybody staff? You guys all remember it, right?
Yep.
So I'd like a motion to close public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Again, this is a type-two action for an STR regulation or, uh, uh, ST, a proposed STR. Um, so no further seeker review is required. Uh, be it resolved that pursuant to the STR regulations and town law, the chairman's authorized to sign the special use permit, allowing the use of the property as an STR with a maximum occupancy of six guests per stay upon payment of any fees, including but not limited to recreation and escrow fees owed to the town. After it's signed by the planning board chairman, the permit shall remain in effect for two years, after which it can be renewed, uh, by the code enforcement officer uh, pursuant to the zoning code. Be it further resolved that if any portion of this, uh, resolution is annulled, uh, the remainder shall stay in effect. But within five days of the effective date of this resolution, a copy should be filed with the uh, town clerk and also provided to the applicant within that same period. Uh, upon its adoption, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Thank you, Paul. So can I have a motion to accept as read?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Well, and to the end, we have, uh, Ivan Dovegan. Thirteen seventeen Route Forty-four fifty-five. We open a public hearing? Let's do, what was this? Yep, yep, yep. Okay. Is there anybody here to speak? Nothing, nobody in Zoom? Like a motion to close public hearing?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Once again, uh, this is a type-two seeker action, so no further seeker review is required. Um, the, uh, pursuant to the STR regulations and town law, uh, the chairman's authorized to sign the special use permit, approving the use of the property uh, with a maximum occupancy of eight guests per stay upon payment of any fees owed to the Town of Lloyd. After it's signed by the chairman, the permit shall remain in effect for two years, after which it can be renewed pursuant to the zoning code by the code enforcement officer. If any portion of this, uh, resolution is annulled by a court, the remainder shall stay in effect. Within five days of the effective date of the resolution, a copy shall be filed with the town clerk and a copy shall also be mailed to the applicant. Um, upon its adoption, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Can I have a motion to accept as read?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that one arrests. You know, that being it, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good job, John. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Paul.
Bye, guys.
Thank you, Paul.
Have a good night. Have a good Fourth, everyone.
You too.
Thank you.
Yep. Bye-bye.